I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All this meeting on the Montague County Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, May 22, 2024. It's 10:00 AM Eastern Standard Time. And let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renata McCourt. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have four exonerations to approve for $481.81. Minutes for May 15, 2024. Vouchers, general county, 130,14786911, 2005 3905, Chestnut Ridge Park, $45,076.83, Camp Muffley, 70242, Mason Dixon Park, 67277, Mon County Center, 5,81768, transportation levy, 21508802, recreation levy, 1,03295, library levy, 52,79330, EMS levy, 445,99667, assessor's valuation, 1,000. Purchasing card vouchers, general county, 33,89131, magistrate court, 7161, I'm sorry, 176170, Chestnut Ridge Park, 7648, Camp Muffley, 15296, Mason Dixon Park, 7648, Mon County Center, 13915, assessor's valuation, 9545, for a voucher total of 935,71699. We have budget revisions in-house for general fund, county commission, circuit clerk, insurance programs, courthouse, other buildings, emergency management, and capital projects extension service, and then also for the general fund that requires state approval, prosecuting attorney, law enforcement, jail reimbursable, central garage, mental health, visitors bureau, capital projects, central garage, and capital projects extension services. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for May 22, 2024.
Okay. Tom, have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Do we have any additional fiduciary items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Introduction, new employee personnel changes, Camp Muffley.
We had actually two corrections from last week. I guess the start date got pushed back a week for Olivia Urs and Gabrielle, or Gabriel, sorry, Shaver. Instead of last Wednesday, the 15th, their new start date is today, May 22.
Move to approve the correction and the employee as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then there's two additional employees for Muffley, Lee Keaton and Willow Brown. Both are seasonal lifeguards, part-time, no benefits, $11 an hour, and their start date is today.
Move to approve the employees as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any other personnel?
No, that's all, thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We will now open the comments from the public section of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise their name, come home, come forward, give your name and address for the record and be heard. And just to, just to let the audience know that the, we generally hold comments to about three minutes, but that's a discretion of the president.
I will keep it under three minutes, sir. Thank you. My name is Chad Francis. I'm from Allensville, West Virginia, and I just wanted to speak for a few minutes regarding an issue here at the commission. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today, not just as an individual, but as a voice of the hard-working, dedicated, and committed employees of the Montague County, West Virginia Assessor's Office. I'm here to advocate for the right to have the opportunity to vote to join a union. These employees are not asking for special treatment. They're asking for a right to vote, the right to have a say in matters that directly affect them, and are asking for the opportunity to collectively bargain, to negotiate for what they believe is fair and just. They're asking for a chance to stand together, to speak with one voice. We do represent other county employees throughout the state, other commission employees. We'd love the opportunity to, at some point, maybe get together, all of us, and sit down and discuss this. So I urge you, the decision-makers, the leaders of our community, to allow a vote and honor your employees' request. I truly appreciate you for your time, and I thank you for the consideration of the matter at hand. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on, sir.
So my name is Mike Payton. I am the International District 31 Vice President. I have been trying to correspond with the commissioner's office multiple times and was a little cautioned by the denial to have a meeting due to an abundance of caution. And we are not hiding in the alleys, we are not the boogeyman, we are not evil people. We just are a union who are trying to represent the people who freely want to join our union. So as public elected officials, you all ask your constituents to freely vote for yourselves. This is all we are simply asking. We're asking to allow these people sought us out, and they collectively want to freely join a union. And that's all we're asking. We're not asking, they're not asking to negotiate a contract, we're not asking for anything like that. They just want to have an opportunity to vote. So multiple times, we've tried to reach the commissioner's office, and the phone just rings and goes to voicemail. Now, we believe that when it comes up, united mind workers, somebody doesn't answer, and we hope that's not the issue. So we're open to any work session, just as today, we received a text that we apparently are on the agenda. No correspondence from anyone at the commissioner's office that we're going to be discussed on the agenda. So, you know, we come today, we hope that the commission does the right thing, and we're asking you to adopt our resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
I think y'all know who I am. Mary Ann Foles. I live at 828 Bloody Run Road, and I am a candidate for county commission. Good luck in November, but you'll see what happens. I wanted to talk today about Bartlett House. I am a firm supporter of helping them out. I believe that they need to do a lot of their own fundraising, get their own financial situation back in order, but I've been up there several times, and I have seen the good work that's happening there. I've never heard the individuals that are living there complain about the staff. They have complained about other people coming in who are disorderly. They, this winter, they did put in an additional 11 beds, so they were over what they had originally had in terms of beds, so they were serving more of the public. They were, they were full most of the time through the winter. Most of the people that live there or have been living there have gotten jobs, they've gotten into substance recovery. They really are changing lives there, and that's what we want. Now, there are always going to be a segment of individuals who don't fit in there, folks who don't want to, they don't want to follow the rules, they don't want to be in by 8:00 PM, they don't want to get up at 6:00 or 7:00, they don't want to have to clean, and they're going to need a different solution. But for the folks who fit well into the Bartlett community and what they have to serve, this organization really is doing a lot for the community. There's a lot of, several people I know that have tried to get in there, the police have tried to take folks there over the last couple of months, and they can't get in. So there's no place for these folks to go. So what I'm here today is to ask that you consider a temporary funding. If you, if you don't want to fund them directly, you could help pay their, their utility bills, you could help pay the rent, you could do things that are going to help keep them open without directly paying that organization. So there's ways that the commission can help. Now, you also have to be pushing them to, you know, to do their own funding, their own fundraiser, they've got one coming up in a week, I've never even seen any advertisements, so they need to be doing that as well. So that's my, that's my push, I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and close the public comment section. Next item on the agenda is grants with our commission office manager, Colleen Coon.
Morning, Colleen.
Morning.
Good morning. Okay, so I have the records management and preservation board grant agreement, the county clerk's office has been awarded $18,881, and that needs to be signed.
Move for the president to sign the grant document as requested.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents.
Do you want me to read the agenda items?
Yes.
Uh, resignation received from K-9 Adoption Center employee David Yarber, effective May 31.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have to move to, move to accept the resignation of David Yarber?
Second.
Okay. First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Letter of support provided to the West Virginia Division of Highways regarding the Morgantown Industrial Park access bridge project.
That is just the letter that we wrote in regards to, we requested by the developers, the mountaintop officials to write a letter of support, which is something that we've, we support in our letter, we specifically, would you, would you mind reading the letter, please?
This was addressed to Travis Long, Director of Technical Support Division of the West Virginia Division of Highways. On behalf of the Montague County Commission, I'm writing to express our support for the Morgantown Industrial Park access bridge project. As predicted, mountaintop beverage is in the process of ramping up shipping volumes, which combined with the projected growth of the Morgantown Industrial Park over the next five years and the continued deterioration of River Road, this access, in addition to the Harmony Grove interchange, is crucial in fulfilling a need for alternate routes to this area for our residents and business community. I-79 exit 152 is already exceeding capacity, and additional infrastructure is critical to address the traffic burden in that area, as well as improving access to the Morgantown Industrial Park. Furthermore, the current Dupont Road, River Road area is home to two public schools, which in the event of emergency lacks critical ingress egress, given the existing traffic. Thank you for consideration.
Okay. So it was important that we're supporting that project and the Harmony Grove project, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we expressed our support, but we also express our support for both projects in addition to the exit 155 project. Do we have any other correspondence?
Uh, yeah, there's several things. We got a notice, it was actually sent to the sheriff, but it's, the commission was copied on it. The Montague County Notice of Auction of Delinquent Non-Entered Lands from the auditor. I think the sale is supposed to be June 27 at 1:30 at the second floor of the sheriff's building.
Okay.
I think Kelly Palmer's here. Did you have anything to add to the?
You want to say now, or I can say?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. It would be synergistic and just do it now, if that's okay.
I just wanted to let everybody know that yellow postcards will go out. We do it as a courtesy to all the property owners whose property will be up for sale. It is June 27, 1:30 at the sheriff's building.
27, and those taxes can be redeemed up till that date?
Through the auditor's office, yes.
Through the auditor's.
Auditors.
Because this is 2022, these are 2022 delinquent taxes.
Okay. So at this point, it has to go through the auditor's?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
The last thing is a letter, we've received a letter from the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, agreeing to be the recipient of the 54.32 million MPDG mega grant, and begin working on an agreement with the county commission to ensure that the grant is properly administered, matched, and compliant with federal, local, and state requirements. So now we will begin the process of negotiating, negotiating, working out an agreement with Division of Highways for the commission's involvement, and then once that's done, then we'll go and address everything with the feds to get that actually changed.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
That is all the correspondence I have.
Mr. Bloom, did you have anything?
Yeah, actually, I do. I have several correspondence with District 4 DOH discussions, as you know, River Road had been closed for a period of time again. After numerous discussions and pictures and explanations, they opened it up yesterday at 1:30. It is being monitored, but River Road is now open. Also, for the third time, I've sent a request about the intersection at Old Sheet Road, Canyon Road, and Fort Pierpont Drive. We're having numerous accidents there, and especially with the closure of the interchange over there, and the exits, there's a lot more traffic there, and there's serious problems there. I've asked for them to reevaluate it because there's a four-way stop sign. They have twice said that it doesn't meet the area for a light, so this time I submitted it again requesting specific reasons why. But it's a problem there, and that whole area needs to be looked at. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that I received a request from the Cheat Lake Rotary, they're asking the commission to continue their support by participating in the Flags for Heroes, and the last several years, the county has done that, and I've, I'll submit you the forms and the applications that they have requested.
Do you recall in previous years, how many?
Twenty.
We did twenty?
$1,000, twenty-four employees.
Commissioner Renata, would you entertain a motion to?
Yeah, I would move that we, we approve the request for the, to sponsor up to $1,000 on the Heroes program, as we've done in the past.
Okay, do we have a second?
You better second.
Okay, I'll second that. And for the public's information, this is basically the, the commission will sponsor that?
Yes.
And we allow our employees to, to take up those sponsorships to any, anybody that wants to recognize either an employee or a loved one can send that information to where you want.
We'll do what we did before and put it on. Put the application on our, on the commission's website?
Okay.
So they can go in and fill out the information, and then we'll direct all the applications to Commissioner Bloom.
Okay. Yes, because there's a, there's an application process, when you go in, you actually put the information in about who you'd like to honor.
Yeah.
So.
And then the Rotary typically will send us an invoice.
And you said that's 20 of those, Tom?
Twenty of them, in fact, we're also, yeah. We're putting the flags up today, and also it'll be put in the paper too, and there'll be information for everyone.
Okay. So first come, first served, as far as employees to take advantage of those 20 free ones that the commission will sponsor?
Correct.
And then anybody else that's interested, just tell them, where's the website on here?
The Cheat Lake Rotary, but if you want, if they want one of the commission flags, we'll put it on our website.
Yeah, let's put it on our website.
Okay. And there's a, Tom has sheets up here, but there's a.
If they want written.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Renata, do you have any correspondence? I had a number of, actually, Commissioner Bloom's had a number of correspondence, but these were more texted in Facebook Messenger text about the whole clear fiber issue.
Yeah.
And I had a call with the Attorney General's Office, Pam Truszkiewicz, the local rep for Attorney General Morsi, and she gave me some information back. We actually have a form that if anybody has a complaint, how do we want to make this form available? Can it be available in the office, or contact us and we'll send you the form?
Is it a form online on their website that they can fill out?
West Virginia Attorney General Consumer Affairs Office.
I assume it would be on there.
I mean, we can make it available if anybody calls the office. We can put it on our website if you'd like, or a link to it possibly.
Yeah, if we can do a link to it, because we've been getting a number of calls, Bloom's been getting a number of calls about individuals who either had proposed service?
Right.
Or had service and now?
Don't have any.
They don't have any, and they're not getting any responses to the, to when they call the clear fiber office. So I understand that there's been a lot of these RDOF defaults across the country, and the FCC really hasn't considered that as far as, as they're rolling out all these dollars and whether they do when, when people default, so they're still trying to figure that out. So for right now, we're just told to have people call the Attorney, West Virginia Attorney General Consumer Affairs line. That number is 800-368-8808, and they're going to ask you to fill out this form. So you either call that number, go to their website and find the form, or we'll put a link to the form on our website.
And, and just for clarification, I appreciate Sean reaching out, because what we learned is there seems to be some confusion now that since the feds gave that area to clear fiber, and now they don't exist, is someone else allowed to come in and take over an area that already the federal government gave it to someone else? So that's why we had the state attorney general involved to try and clarify these issues.
And this is kind of a new issue, because there has been, and I don't know what, this is a federal, the violation is using USDA grant funds for an improper purpose, and it's an allegation, it still has to go through the whole legal process. I mean, there's not even a court date scheduled till the 29th of, of May, so the, the customers are kind of left in limbo, so we really don't know where it's going from there, but we will, as this evolves, we'll keep involved, and if we can ask our local ISP partners to jump in where they can, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you very much.
But we're, we're at the very beginning of this issue, so we're trying. Any other correspondence? Okay? Unfinished business? We have none. New business to consider for approval, requisition number 27 for Series 2021B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
The requisition total is 289,32239. Those funds will be paid to MBB Bank on construction, for construction in, in interest, excuse me.
Move to approve the requisition as requested?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval, of consideration proposal provided by Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield for county employee group insurance, effective August 1, 2024, and setting premiums for the new plan year. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and discussion?
This took, took a long negotiating time, especially, I'd like to thank our administrator, Renata McClore, and then our president, Sean, who worked very hard on top of the meetings that Commissioner Bloom and I participated in to get this nailed down to have the least effect on, the least negative effect on our employees as is possible. We were faced with a daunting task of a rather extraordinarily large increase in premium, and so through diligent efforts by them and the commission, we've, and our friends at USI, who are our brokers for this insurance, have whittled that down to a, to a plan that I feel is, is comparable to what we had before, and shouldn't affect the bottom line too much for us or for our employees. So thank you.
Tom, you have anything?
No.
So basically, what we're doing is, previously, the county offered two plans. We had a high deductible plan and a regular PPO. As of 8/1, we'll be moving everybody in the county to the PPO. That PPO plan will have a, what we're doing to trying to keep our premiums down is we're going to raise our deductibles. So that Super Blue Plus 2,000 Plan will have a deductible of 6,000 for individuals and 12,000 for families. But we're also incorporating in an HRA. Previously, we had an HSA, which we were, at the beginning of the year, we contributed 2,000 to an account for each employee that was participating in the high deductible plan. We will be moving to an HRA plan, which is administered a little differently. So of that $6,000, though, our employees will only be responsible for the first 750 as a single employee. That means the commission will be shouldering the burden for the other 500, 5,250. For the family, that individual will be responsible for 1,500 of that deductible, and the commission will be shouldering, shouldering the burden for the other 10,500. So we're taking on, the commission is taking on a lot more liability to keep those rates down, and what we essentially did, we're able to get the increase in premiums to only about 69,000. So it's like 4.9, 4, 4, 4,922, and we got it to like 4,990. So that's about a $69,000 increase. But we're taking on the HRA requirement, I mean, our maximum liability, which will never hit that, I mean, every employee would have to completely max out, which is, through the calculations, is almost virtually impossible, is about a $1.9 million liability to the county. So we will be taking that on, we're, the actuarial tables tell us that 40% is a good estimate as far as what will actually hit, so we're, we're looking to incur a liability of about 600, 6, 768,000 in the next year to cover those deductibles for our employees. So if you take the 69,000, you add the 768, you subtract the 400,000 that we put into the HSAs last year, it's about a $440,000 difference increase, but that, that is where we're at now, based off of where we started, and we're looking at like a 36% increase on our premiums, about a $1.5 million increase. So we've got that down to about 400,000. We still have to make a decision as far as how, how we're addressing those premiums. That will come in a later decision, we just needed to get the process started. We're also, one thing that employees liked about the HS, the HSA program was those dollars were in a portable account, it went with the employee regardless of where they went. They can also deduct dollars into those accounts pre-tax. So it was a nice incentive for the employees if they wanted to build up a nest egg to, to do pre-tax dollars into that account. We are also going to initiate an FSA, flexible spending account, which the employees will be able to, at their option, be able to contribute pre-tax into that account. The only difference with that account is every year it has to be wiped, so you have to spend the money that year, so you have to plan a little better, but it does give you the opportunity to take dollars and put them aside for medical purposes, pre-tax, and save on, save on your tax bill. So overall, we believe, based with everything that we were facing, that it's a much better plan. As I said, it's for the individuals, it's $6,000 deductible, the employee will be responsible for 750. There's a cap on, there's a cap on co-insurance up to a certain amount, there's an overall cap on, and again, we did the calculations, there's an overall out-of-pocket maximum, so I really, what, where we're going to be at and where our employees are going to be at is really comparable to where we've been in the past, and I think we've did a good job, you know, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars while keeping, I mean, our, our overall objective when we started this whole process was to cause as little pain to our employees as possible, and I think we've done that, and I think we've even, they'll even end up with a better plan, and a lot of our employees will actually save money. So I think we ended up with the best scenario.
We've also been told that our plan still is in the 90, 35th percentile in best plans offered by similar employees across, at least the region that this group participates in.
Yes, the benchmarking for our plan is still very rich, we're still in the 90, 95 percentile as far as other offerings from like entities, and also other offerings from corporate entities. So we're, we're very competitive with everybody out there, and as our, our number one objective is our employees, but we also can't just write a check every time we have these increases, so we have to find the creative ways to work through them, and I hope our employees will appreciate that I think we're there, and I think once, the change is always, is never easy, but once we, we'll have about 166 employees that will have to move into that plan of about 266, so about half our employees will see a change in their plans, so there will be a little bit of disruption as far as just a learning curve, as far as to understand how your plan works. But I do believe that it's a much better product, a much more solid product. We've driven those premiums down by the county covering the risk on the deductibles, and I, I think it's a, I think it's an overall very prudent move, so.
I, all I want to say is I think the public needs to understand, employees, that there was a 35% increase. We knew it was going to be large, we knew that was going to happen, and we have to make some major decisions. That would have been a $1.5 million increase, just to maintain the services that we had.
And we did all of our due diligence, we did all the steps, and I, the, the, the commission delegated me and the administrator to meet regularly with the brokers, and we looked at, we, we looked at other entities, we looked at other plans, we did, you know, they, we had them do competition and compare plans across everything else out there, so we believe that we ended up with the best product possible. It took a while, but we're here. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration of a response to the UMWA regarding possible representation of the Montague County Assessor's Office employees. As we heard from some of the speakers, we did receive correspondence from the local UMWA. We cautiously, of.
We cautiously, uh, shared that with our council. Uh, the commission had, uh, some correspondence in a meeting with our council. Uh, and then we, as a commission, knew that we had to respond to the request that was in front of us. So, uh, as, as a commission, a public body, we're completely transparent. We have to do every, all of our deliberations in public. So I took a lead to make the draft of, of the response and I have provided to the commissioners in their folder. And they also have a hard copy and I'd like to read that response and then I'll entertain a motion, uh, after that. So it's directed to, um, Mr. Payton. Dear, dear Director Payton, the Montague County Commission has given due consideration to the email and resolution being proposed by the United Mind Workers of America. After extensive deliberation and consultation with legal counsel, we have concluded that we do not have an action as your communication implies. It is the opinion of this commission that employees in Montague County's Assessor's Office have the ability to choose for themselves to support a union. But we do not agree that having an intervening third party represent the employees is in the best interest of our employees, nor would it be beneficial to the overall governance of Montague County. The commissioners are elected by the citizens of this county to exercise their best judgment and be stewards of the county's resources. The commission operates in a completely transparent manner and when planning our yearly operating budget, public meetings are conducted with each office of the county to discuss the needs for the upcoming year. We fully believe that our most valuable asset is our employees and are considered first and foremost in every budget and/or fiduciary decision that we make. We simply do not believe that adding another layer and therefore costs this process is in the best interest of the county, our employees, or the citizens. Montague County Commission. So we'll.
I would move that we, uh, we adopt this letter and have it signed by all three commissioners.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. We have first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consideration to accept a presentation of 2024 land and personal property books and requests for Commissioner's signature on oath of certificates.
Something you guys do every year.
Yeah. Move to accept.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration to approve the fiscal year 2025 budgets for minor funds. These, the funds are the nine 11, 911 account. So that's under, uh, account, uh, 007.
Yeah.
Chestnut Ridge Park under account 013. Camp Muffley, count 021. Mason Dixon Historical Park, count 022. Mon County Center, count 023 and Parks and, uh, Parks and Rec Levy, account 033. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration to approve a proposal to add a performance and goal management module as a supplement to the ADP workforce now product currently in use by the county.
Move to approve the proposal.
As second.
Okay.
Um, this essentially is a performance, uh, and as it implies, the name implies a performance and goal man, uh, management module. It allows, uh, each office of the county to be able to do their employee, do employee evaluations in whatever manner they, they decide. They can do it quarterly, semi-annually, annually. Uh, they can decide the metrics that are utilized and set the goals, uh, as need. And then the employees can go in and do the self-evaluation. Uh, and then there's a back iterative process, back and forth with their managers, uh, to give employees feedback as regards, in regards to their employment. It's, it will be made available to all offices of the county. Uh, there's also a, um, succession planning part of that that allows offices to kind of also start looking at succession planning so that they're, they're kind of looking down the road as far as how their office is staffed. Um, the cost of this is 6,045 annually, uh, but we get free month, uh, free six months fee, uh, free spread over two years. So the net annual investment is 4,533.75. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This is something that's been part of our overall process to, uh, uh, institute some best practices in regards to human resources in addition to all of our efforts with our, um, uh, human resource consul, consultations.
Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Senator Oliverio.
You're just on the radio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Always a pleasure to be with you. We have shared priorities on, uh, transportation issues and just wanted to give you an update on that. Coming home from our legislative session yesterday, the legislature approved an additional 150 million dollars to the Department of Transportation to be used by the Division of Highways, uh, for paving projects. We look to be able to get about 3 million of those dollars for paving projects in Montague County in addition to those already planned. Um, I had an opportunity with one of our other senators representing Montague County, Senator Charlie Clements. Uh, the two of us had an opportunity to meet with Secretary Riston of the Department of Transportation on Monday morning. And we raised the, uh, priorities for Montague County that you have been helping advocate for as well. And our issues that we raised with him included, uh, the Harmony Grove exit, the Star City exit, uh, with discussions, uh, Commissioner Bloom, uh, regarding the use of the state dollars and the federal grant that you all pursued and were successful in achieving. Trying to renew his commitment, uh, to the use of those dollars in a timely manner. We talked about the project coming off of 119 and the bridge across the Monongahela, uh, coming into the industrial park. And again, encouraged that that project continue to be a priority. Um, we talked a lot about Westover and the paving project that has taken many years. Uh, and we were asking that steps be taken by the Division of Highways to expedite that project to get that completed. Those who have driven through Westover have seen that the curbs and different things that needed to be there were put in first. And that is a process that the Division of Highways has been taking more and more. But then to come back and finish the utility work and the paving itself is where we've been hung up. Uh, so, uh, we encouraged him to make that a priority of his department to get that done. I apologize to the citizens of Westover that that hasn't been done sooner. I've been in office about 15 months and I've been on that project for about 15 months. So we'll continue to work on that. Um, a, a very important issue regarding higher education as it impacts this county was also on the legislative agenda. What has happened is, and, and I like to joke sometimes, so don't take me too literally here. But the, the federal government, when they hired the folks during the Obama administration to do the Obamacare website, those same folks were hired again to do the FAFSA changes. Uh, I say that in jest, but we've been four years with the federal government trying to change the FAFSA form, which is a form filled out by every family in America that has children in college. And, you know, we were able to execute financial aid and FAFSA forms back in the early eighties when I went to college before any family in America owned a personal computer. But for some reason today, we can't seem to do that. And so what's happened is there are families all across the country, uh, who have not been able to successfully complete their FAFSA form. And the problem is in order to receive any financial aid, most, uh, aid packages, loan packages require the completion of the FAFSA. Even affluent families whose child has maybe qualified for a merit-based program, they can't get their merit-based dollars. The needy family who's qualified based on need, they can't get the, the, the grants there, the loans, everything else. So we've had this complete collapse in financial aid, uh, for our college students. And it doesn't just affect the students coming into college for the first time. It affects all those that are returning for the second, third and fourth year. So what we have done is we've passed an 83 million dollar loan package yesterday, uh, that will make about 32 million dollars available to the institutions and will help with some of their operation costs. We've got about 40 million dollars that is a grant fund that will be administered by the chancellor of the Higher Education Policy Commission. Then there's about an 11 million dollar access or assistance fund, uh, that will be available as well. And so what I would like to encourage you to do in your conversations with families that you represent who have college-aged children is for those students who have been unable to get through the maze of the FAFSA, have those students go to the college where they have been admitted or where they are hoping to return and indicate the problem that they have. And then that college will be able to interface with the Higher Education Policy Commission to free up dollars to pay that student's tuition and get them re-enrolled. Uh, and in the absence of that, we could find ourselves with hundreds and hundreds, potentially thousands of college students come August that won't be able to return to campus. And the impact of that on a place like WVU or Fairmont State is, you know, potentially the inability to make payroll, to, to pay our vendors, you know, somebody selling fruits and vegetables to the cafeteria and all of a sudden we don't have money to pay all of these different vendors. So it's, it's potentially a very significant problem. I applaud the governor for, uh, issuing, uh, an emergency order, uh, you know, with respect to financial aid programs. Uh, we have extended that emergency order now through October with our actions, uh, this week. And what we hope in the end is, we hope these college students who wish to return for another year of school or those coming the first time, we hope that the finances of that can be worked out, that the finances of the institutions can be maintained. And then when this smoke clears on this, it's our intention to pursue reimbursement from the federal government. Most recent study I saw showed that 3.6 billion dollars of Pell Grant dollars are currently trapped in the federal government. 3.6 billion. So if you start to do a little math trickling down to one state in the union, even a small state, you can start to see that's tens of millions of dollars that are trapped in just the Pell Grant program alone. So, so we hope to, hope to resolve that and we hope to get our money back, uh, when it's over. So those were a couple of the things that I think affect our community the most, the transportation, higher education. We have made additional dollars available for human services, particularly people with disabilities, caring for them. And, um, but, uh, those are some of the things that we worked on. Um, I also have a LIDA, uh, grant to present today. I had some families who have loved ones, uh, buried in the Oak Grove Cemetery. And they indicated to me there were a lot of problems out there with, in turn, some maintenance issues, but also some, uh, older trees that were dead or dying, uh, that presented a real risk of some of those trees falling down or significant branches falling off of them. And they asked me if I could pursue some funding to help with, uh, work there. And so I want to bring that check to you all and have you all administer that, uh, to ensure that those dollars go to the right place to, uh, to make sure that that continues to be a safe place for people to go and remember their, their loved ones.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mike.
And it's a check for 10,000 dollars to help with that.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Any questions you guys have for me?
No, I appreciate your efforts in regards to, uh, the DOH projects. Uh, we, um, there's a, at our last MMPO meeting, we, uh, delegated a, a, a committee to, uh, talk to, uh, DOH directly about the convergence of those two projects, really at Exit 155 with the, the, um, the grant for 54 million and then the 66 million that was projected by the state. And how those all play together. Uh, we just, we read in correspondence, we got their letter back from them where we had asked them to, uh, we were interested in signing the grant to them so that it would actually work smoother. But we need to get with them to work out that agreement. And then once we have that agreement, we need to go to federal transportation and, and concert and say, we agree that this be assigned to the DOH. And that's a process where federal DOT has to get with state DOT and work out an agreement. And I guess that takes a good, good amount of time. And it's going to bump us up close to that deadline for starting to utilize, having the funds obligated for that grant. So from time to time, we may need, uh, you know, we may need help making sure that we're both focused and, uh, moving that project forward. But, um, we'll, we'll certainly keep you updated on that.
Well, at, at the direction of, uh, Delegate Statler, who also wears another hat with the, with the MMMPO.
Yeah. He's the one that delegated me to work on that.
He asked me in that meeting to be sure to convey that, that, that it was the role, it was the goal of the MMMPO and the, uh, Mon County Commission, uh, to have DOH administer that, those grants. So I did, I did convey that message.
Yeah.
And, uh, um, I, I just, I struggle with the speed at which they move. And, uh, you all know my frustration with the ditching and the mowing and, you know, was able to get the DOH to enter into private contracts, uh, a couple of months ago now for our three biggest counties in District Four, uh, Montague, uh, Harrison and Preston. And those three contracts totaled about 6.6 million dollars. And, and the impact here is that 2.2 million dollar contract with Anderson Excavating. And the, the purpose of that contract is to have them, uh, dig and clear ditches along our paved roads. And the, the DOH's core maintenance program calls for a paved road to have the ditch cleared once every three years. And so we'll see what kind of success Anderson can have in terms of our total number of road miles. How many of those can be ditched this summer and, and this summer under that contract? And, and, uh, Secretary Riston has concerns that private sector companies might not be able to do that as well as, uh, the DOH does it. And I just said, well, come out and inspect them, you know, review what they're doing, offer guidance. Is there a particular piece of equipment that Anderson Excavating needs to buy that the state has? Or, you know, I really kind of tried to engage with him, um, you know, that, that we think this is important. So, um, uh, he, he indicated he would provide them all the support, instruction, direction. So I, I'm hopeful this money, you know, it's 2.2 million dollars. Uh, hopeful this money will be helpful. I have pushed, uh, Secretary Riston and the Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, uh, to hire more folks up here. Um, they have had some career fairs, uh, up here at, at my request. And during those career fairs, they have been able to hire some folks, have a little difficulty maintaining some of those folks. But they have been successful at increasing the number of folks, uh, and with some training, I think that'll be helpful. I have complained consistently about the mowing and the appearance of our community for visitors. I stress to them constantly that, um, Morgantown doesn't compete against other cities in West Virginia. Morgantown competes against Columbus and Pittsburgh and Blacksburg and Louisville, College Park. Those are the places that our community competes with. And we compete for students. We compete for faculty and staff and we compete for physicians. And so our community, we have to match or, or be better than those communities in terms of our appearance and amenities and services that we offer. And I have a hard time sometimes getting them to understand that. So I stress that, um, you know, that that needs to be done. Secretary Riston assured me yesterday that they bought 108 new lawnmowers. I'm hoping they use those in Montague County and, and maintain, uh, maintain our medians and try to make our, our community a welcoming place when a family from, fill in the blank, Pennsylvania, Maryland, New Jersey, brings a son or daughter to Morgantown this summer to consider coming to school here. Uh, so, so that's what I've been working on. I really appreciate the support that I have from the three of you. Uh, I think it's a, it's a, you know, a great working relationship. Happy to communicate with you guys during the session and you all are, are, all three of you are, are very quick to reply immediately when I have questions. And, uh, uh, I'm real pleased, obviously to represent the county, but also to, to represent your needs in Charleston as well.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for all your efforts.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I was just going to say, uh,
Good luck in your futures.
What was real evident is that the three of us continue to work with District Four and Mike Daly. And we really appreciate everything you're doing at the state level. I do want you to know something that happened before you got elected and this is the confusion that is happening. that is happening. We all went to a meeting, it was, I think, two or three years ago, when we went down to Clarksville, and it was discussed that they were changing the entire policy, and that the state was going to allow the districts to have more autonomy. And that was something we all wanted. Something has happened that that's not working, because when we talk to the low, the district, they say, sorry, I can't do that without the state, without the state. So that's something, that was a change in policy that happened. We all, that was Morgantown, everyone was there, the, the whole region, and we thought that was going to be a real advantage to us. And that hasn't happened, and that seems to be where our problem is. We are going to the district, and they've been more than willing to work with it and what they can do. But just so you're aware of it, I don't know what happened there, and that's something that was major news and isn't being followed. So I just want you to be aware of that. Do you all remember when we went to that meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we appreciate everything you're doing.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Mike, did you want to picture with the check, or did, I didn't know if you wanted, presenting the check?
I don't know what your policy is.
If you wanted one, you can have one, but sometimes people want to take a picture of presenting the check.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll come down there.
We'll come down. Hey, we're happy when you bring these dollars to Mon County.
We're coming.
Thank you, you're the tallest, just keep the middle there.
Okay. You can hand it to Sean, he's the second tallest.
All right. Let's take that one.
Thanks, Mike.
Appreciate all your efforts.
Anything you can get in written form, we appreciate. That's what our problem is.
I took your very shoot this morning.
Thank you.
9:33.
I really appreciate that. That was gritty. Well-accepted.
Okay. We're still under reports from elected officials and their department supervisors. Do we have anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Well, I was out last week, vacation with my family, so I appreciate you guys. Moving on without me, the only thing I really have to announce is, after several hurdles and issues, we, we think we're on pace to open the pool at Camp Muffley this weekend. So the, the staff out there's been working very hard to get the pool ready, and I think they're, they're on track. And last, I just checked before the meeting, and that's, that's the report I get. So if you get a chance, get out there, it'll be a hot weekend, and you can cool down in a nice chilly pool.
Yeah, we, yeah, welcome back. The three of us had the thrilling duty to spend 11 hours and 39 minutes.
But who's counting?
Yeah, watching, watching people count and canvassing. It is just a process that needs to be done. I'm glad we do it, but it is, for someone like myself who has OCD, to sit there for that myriad of time and not do anything. I think I drove Sean and Jeff nuts. So I do appreciate, though, I want to thank all those individuals who did do the canvassing, they spent a lot of time doing it. I, I do want to appreciate the staff, the clerk's office for doing it, and that is all I have to say at this time.
Okay. Since our last meeting, last Thursday, I had a meeting with the city manager, and then after, to discuss a number of projects on behalf of the commission. And then Thursday evening, we had the MM, MMPO meeting. Friday, we had staff reports and a broadband tag-up. As Commissioner Bloom mentioned, Monday was election canvassing. We ended up having to recess at 5:00 and then come back the next day. That evening, my daughter graduates this Saturday, so this week, it's all the events. So I have, other than tonight, I have an event every night this week. So Monday night, it was the Band Banquet, which was held at our facility, and our, our staff did a wonderful job. I got a lot of compliments, and thanks to the commission for, for making that facility available to community organizations, you know, like the Morgantown High Band. They've, they've told me that's the favorite place to have their dinner. Tuesday, we met back up and finished election canvassing, and I do want to thank all the clerk and her staff, that there was a time-consuming effort, but it needs to be done. After that, the administrator and I, yesterday afternoon, had a call with our HR consultants, and then we had a call with a Westridge developer. And then last night, I went to the MHS Senior Awards Night, and just listening to, I mean, it was three hours of just, and they, they kept it moving, but it was three hours of just all these, the seniors and all the awards, and it was, it's amazing that the talent that comes out of, out of our county, and out of, you know, out of both high schools. But every, like, when they were talking about a different level of awards, one girl from Morgantown High, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mess her name up, so I'm not gonna say it, but out of like 3.5 million kids that graduate this year, she was in the top 265. She was one of 200, 265 for this one award. I can't remember which one it was, but, I mean, it's just amazing. So it was a good night, just listening to all that, and reaffirming our future here in Mon County. Today's a regular day. I have a broadband tag-up this afternoon. Tomorrow, we have Mylan Park Foundation Executive Board of Directors meeting. I have a lunch with the constituent, and then a meeting with the city manager, and then the lacrosse banquet. Not really sure where that one's being held. Friday, staff reports and broadband tag-up. As I mentioned, the graduations are this weekend. When is Clay Batel's? Morgantown is Friday?
No, I think University High's Friday night.
I'm sorry, University High's Friday.
Saturday morning is Morgantown. I don't know when Clay Batel's.
Maybe, maybe Saturday. Do you know when Kelly Batel's graduation?
Chase told me it was last weekend, so I don't know.
I don't think, I don't know. He was correct or not.
Well, for the record, Chase isn't graduating, so if he says next week, it was last weekend, and he was graduating.
And no offense, he's a boy, so, you know, there's that.
Okay, well, the graduations are this weekend, so congratulations to all of our grads.
We have Trinity also, I don't know.
Yes, and Trinity.
Yeah, Trinity.
Not really sure where theirs, theirs is also, so be careful out there. This weekend is obviously Memorial Day weekend, so everyone, please take time to remember those who lost, who gave their lives in, in fighting for this country, so that we can sit here and do what we're doing. And I hope all of our employees have a great, great, well-deserved weekend. That's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.